Policy that out-of-state trips require your blessing. And if you are on the fence or need a bit of convincing, I am very happy to talk about the benefits of this trip. First and foremost, what our kids learn in history and English and in art come to life in DC. Walking the halls of Congress and hopefully this year, the White House. I am in touch with Elizabeth Warren's office to score tickets for that. We visit monuments, we spend time at the glorious Smithsonian museums. These are experiences that stick to our bone marrow in a way that textbooks cannot. Two museums of the many we go to provide a visceral experience of history. That's the Holocaust Museum and the African-American Museum of History and Culture. There are other remarkable benefits as well, including the bonding and team building that occur throughout our time together. For some of our students, this is their first journey outside of Massachusetts. For others, it's their first trip to DC. They learn how to navigate the demands of a city. There's a lot of team building that occurs as they help each other navigate the museums and the mall and the Congress. At the end, they've accomplished so much, they've seen so much, and they've grown up a little bit. This year is unique. We are planning, we are hoping to take two grade levels, the 10th and 11th grades. Historically, the trip was designed for the 11th grade, but after much curriculum soul-searching, we decided that it was better suited for the 10th grade. However, that would mean that our 11th graders this year would miss out on this marvelous opportunity. So we crunched some numbers and because of your various generous increase of our field trips budgets, of our field trip budgets in both English and history, we are able to offer the trip to both grades at a very reasonable cost. I am happy to entertain any questions. Do you have any money?
The proposal says you're seeking additional funding. Is that still operative or no?
Yes.
Permission, may I jump in? We're no longer seeking additional funding. It's a good reason. And I just want to make it clear that the 10th and 11th combining is just for this one year to make the transition. Originally, we had toyed with the idea of trying to secure further funds to lower the per people cost. In the end, we decided we didn't need to do that, and we're not looking for further funding at this point. That was a very late development, not Ms. Getz's fault.
Any other, did you have something to add?
The only thing I can say is that your exuberance is contagious. Fantastic.
I will just say, I think that the 10th grade shift too, I mean, not that I wouldn't trust your judgment on that, I certainly do. In my mind, is also a great opportunity for students who might be thinking about colleges as we know the junior year gets very full and some families do not always have the ability to take their children on a college trip. So being able to be there at the sophomore year gives plants a seed and I think enables students to get a sense of what that city's like if their family doesn't have the opportunity or hadn't yet had the opportunity to bring them there. So I like, I think obviously you're aligning with your curriculum and your goals for the students, but I also think there's an added benefit of them having a chance to see a quite vibrant city with a lot of academic institutions for them to think about as they move forward. So it's wonderful. And I, when my children were in Lenox, we did not do this trip. We have family in the area, so we did the trip, but I really think it's so important that students have this opportunity and doing it within the context of their academics and their teaching and the mentorship of their teachers, I think is really wonderful. And that you do this with a multi-subject, multidisciplinary approach, I think is also really important. So I'm thinking.
Can I ask how many students total?
Well, we've tallied both the 10th and 11th grades and we are at 121 students. However, we haven't really gauged exactly who's coming. I can't do that until I get the green light to move forward.
So is that or under basically?
Yes, exactly.
And I'm seeing you have like 11 chaperones.
Twelve, yes.
Twelve chaperones.
Twelve chaperones, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah, 10 students.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just add to the no additional cost. They're not asking for additional money, but I may bring forward a transfer to you to move funding from one type of line to this line. We have excess in some. This will be a little while.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the field trip to Washington DC for the 10th and 11th graders.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Principals are going to share their school improvement plans. First, that's his doctorates with the L and then ATF.
I'll stand in front of the microphone just because I know that Principal Kelly will have to follow me and do the same. Just a couple of slides before getting to the four goals of our school improvement plan. Our current enrollment is 448, number faculty members and so on. What was the most fun to put together was the last bullet point. For a while, I tried to explore how to actually come up with a graphic that was going to have certain towns shaded, but I didn't end up with time. But we do come from 19 different towns in Berkshire County and 11 different countries, which I think, given our size, is an impressive metric. That's who we are. We have four goals in our school improvement plan. I'll break these out in just a second. They include refining the scheduling of our arts electives. In my summary, I said arts electives, but when you see this goal, you'll see that it's not just arts electives really, it's really electives and truly all of our schedule. Nurture a positive school environment, optimizing the middle school program, and improving writing abilities of high school students. So refining scheduling of arts electives, again, I should have been clearer in my summary. There is some concern that given our size, often students aren't able to make the most of our arts electives and some of our science electives and our tech electives as well. This may not be a problem we can solve. In other words, it may just be a product of our size and something we're going to have to do the best we can with. But I want students who are excited about the arts to feel like we're giving them every access to the arts. In other words, they shouldn't have to feel like they can't take band because they want to take AP Calc. There are some realities around scheduling when you're our size and you do have to set some priorities. It's just the way it is. But I want to have the conversation and make sure that we're asking all the questions about scheduling. Should kids get to choose what their priority is when they schedule? Or do we all have to have, do we have to schedule core classes in sequence first and then electives, for example? So that's something I hope we're able to look into. An opportunity we have with this goal is Power School. We used Power School last year, not to its full extent. This year, we have a meeting next week already starting to ramp up our scheduling for next year. And I'm hoping that if we tap into everything Power School lets us do with scheduling, we might be able to give more students access to more courses. But that's our first goal in the CIP. Nurture a positive school environment started last year. We're going to continue with some of the same work. We've added some work as well. Work in this vein includes our work with the Anti-Defamation League, our work around belonging, creating a brave and safe space. We started a convocation. The Flo one came and spoke. We've had, two out of our last three faculty meetings have focused on work directly from the ADL. I had a school council meeting this afternoon. We were working with an activity from the ADL as well. We have things like, there's a poster campaign in the hallways. It was designed over the summer with quotes, specific things kids can say when they're faced with negative behavior. Things teachers can say when they feel uncomfortable about something a student or an adult says in the classroom. We have banners, some of you may have seen our brave and safe space banners when you walk in. There's one in the office, there's one in the entry hall as well. We have brave, oh my goodness, I'm not wearing my brave, there he is, he's got his brave and safe space wristband on. We give banners after certain events just to help them remember who we are, who we're striving to be, and their role in that process. Optimize the middle school program. This really, we have Tim Lee to thank for this. I've changed it a little bit after some discussion with my school council. The focus of the goal last year really had to do with middle school pedagogy, how we're teaching students in the middle school. That's certainly well worth our time, but I think we can, we can get at some of our structural problems more directly by looking at our middle school schedule. We do some neat things with our middle school schedule so that we can offer kids as much math as possible, but it results in a really, really complex schedule. It's difficult to explain to students and parents. And it's, it's time to try something new. We're already kind of up against the clock on this. If we're going to use this for next year, and that is the goal, we're going to have to make some changes in the next two or three months before our scheduling process gets put into place. But I think it's a change we have to make. It's really difficult for kids to understand what the schedule is. It's difficult for them to understand the value of their time within that schedule when it's so complex. So that's our third goal. And our fourth goal is really not changed much. This has to do with students' writing abilities as they approach the end of their career with us here at Lenox. Of course, it starts in the elementary school, it continues to the middle school, all the way up. When we talk about this goal in our building, some voices seem to be convinced that this is a remnant of COVID. This isn't really reflective of our curriculum. And that may be the case, but we have some work to do. We really want to make sure that when our kids leave, that their writing at that level, they need to be successful in college and beyond, wherever that may take them. This goal was intended to start last year. We really didn't make much progress on this because of some curriculum work that we started in its place. Valuable stuff, but some of the department meeting time, the time that we would have used to get traction on this was used for other curricular work. We're hoping to continue with this. We think it's important, but truthfully, last year was the first year of a two-year goal and this year will be again probably the first year of what's at least a two-year process. But we think it's important and we want to, we want to leave it in place. We want to include it in our work. That's our fourth goal. Those are the four goals that are in our school improvement plan. These are the people that I'm working with and I can't thank them enough. I think people think school council meetings are just sort of a quick add-on to a faculty meeting. I don't know, but this is a hard-working group. They're really putting in the time I look forward to working with them throughout the year. Back to the four goals, can I answer any questions?
I have a couple. One is, I hear you're saying that optimizing the middle school program is the word. You talked about scheduling. Can you fill in a little bit more about how the schedule is, I mean, the issues of the middle school have been in conversation for many years, in my opinion, certainly in how do we operate a middle school as part of a middle high school? And how middle school students are different, et cetera? There's probably lots of different ideas about what to do. How is the schedule going to impact that?
Right now, the middle school schedule is really driven by, if you, just as a reminder, we have, we call it a rotating drop. It's not really a rotating drop, it's just a drop schedule. We have eight instructional periods. They all meet on Mondays and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, two of those eight periods drop, so we only have six classes that meet. What that means is, any one of those eight instructional periods only meets four times a week. They meet on that Monday, and then they'll meet three out of the remaining four days. We decided as a program years ago that we wanted to make sure that our students were getting as much math as possible. So in the middle school, including grades six, seven, and eight, math is the only subject that's not subject to, forgive the pun, that drop. Even on the day that math would drop, we add it back into their schedule in this extra period. We've called that period enrichment, we've called it advisory, we've called it probably three or four different things. Really is just that extra period at the end of the day that we don't fully utilize. It's not used for project-based learning the way we talk about it. We have great ideas and teachers are doing some great things to try to make it work, but it ends up being the extra period when the kids aren't in that extra math class. Not saying we shouldn't continue to find a way to work math back in, that may be feasible, but I think we need to find a way to make sure all of our kids are getting the most out of every period of instruction, every minute of every period, instead of just focusing on making sure that we get kids in a math classroom five days a week. Which is a great intention, but I think, given the limitations of our schedule, isn't giving us everything we could, we could get out of their time. That's the scheduling challenge.
Okay. Because the title of optimizing the middle school program, obviously, and again, I'm not suggesting to micromanage or question the mechanics and why this matters. I kind of was just wondering about the concerns we've had over the years of middle school, the culture of the middle school, the shift from Morris into middle school and kind of what's, what's happening with students of that age?
Yeah, and it's not, I'm not comfortable shedding all that just for the schedule. Schedule is definitely the biggest part of it, but there are things like physical space in our building, right? To what degree can we shelter our middle school students? Last year, for example, we had, and we're short on space, we've said that in this room before, we had high school classes scheduled in the middle school and we had middle school students scheduled in the high school with a few exceptions. This year, we've scheduled our middle school classes in the middle school. Brooke Kaminsky's classroom is the only room that has high school students programmed to be in it. That's just a space designed for high school students and it's right inside. Our foreign language teachers travel into the middle school to teach in grades six and seven. Only classes that come out are two eighth grade oral language classes. Everything else happens in the middle school. What that means is, they're not, they're not going to a high school bathroom, for example, during class. They're in the middle school hallway only. And that's important. Things like that is what we're trying to do. So that's part of that middle school model that we're working to strengthen. The schedule's a big piece of it, but not the only piece.
Jeremiah, can I circle back on your comments about the math for a sec?
Sure.
So it seems like, and I think this discussion came up at the end of last year, perhaps during the budgeting process, and that's, we've removed, we've reduced the number of sort of curriculum instruction days from five to four? Or does that enrichment class, is it just, is it arose by another, you know, is it still like a curriculum, you're just, it's day five? The reason I ask is, what I can't get my head around is, we've reduced the learning, the in-class learning time by what, 20%? I don't know how many weeks of learning that, it's probably a month and a half of learning based on 180 days. So, but it's the same amount of curriculum.
Right.
So do we see any, what do we see or anything in MCAS or are we, you know, that's got to have an effect. I mean, my gut is that has an effect.
Sure, sure, it has an effect. So it's important to remember that when we go from five periods to four, you've got to remember that three of those four periods are nearly an hour long. So it's not as if you're getting, you're just missing, you're missing out on a class meeting time, but you're getting nearly as many minutes, right? Because those.
I think that's what you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
Like three less or something like that.
There might be, it might be a minute-to-minute loss, honestly, just because the classes don't all line up perfectly. But it's not as if because they're meeting four times a week and not five, you're meeting a lot less. You are meeting fewer times a week though, and the math faculty and a lot, I mean, I supported at the time as a parent, we didn't want to have them going a day without math class. And so to have them in front of a math teacher with their, you know, working within the curriculum for a fifth time during the week, it means that while they're meeting with their math teacher, other students are doing something else. And I think to answer your question is, it's not wasted time, right? They're meeting with their science teacher, their social studies teacher. It's how we're able to use that time. And it comes down to, you know, do you know what kids are going to be in the room? Are they going to be roughly at the same level? Can you really plan? You know, if you just had those kids two hours earlier for your regular class, can you realistically move forward with your curriculum? Because you have them two hours later in that enrichment period. These are the, these are the challenges of that schedule that we're really hoping we can, you know.
So does the, but does the enrichment period look backwards? Like, is the enrichment period to reinforce what they've just learned rather than to kind of keep the ball rolling, so to speak?
It's a good question, and it gets to the complexity of this. Some teachers are able to do that and some are not. It has to do, there are a lot of variables, but again, it has to do with, are you, do you get those kids after you taught your lesson? Or do you get those extra kids in your enrichment period before you've even taught your lesson for them for that day, right?
And that's scheduling, is that?
Yeah, yeah, that's scheduling, right? So, and again, it has to do with, are you getting kids that are roughly at the same level? Or are you getting kids that are from, you know, all different levels and some of them have already had a science class that day and some of them have not? For example, that's why this, and it's, are we, are we losing time? No. We still have the time, but it's, we're really not able to use that instructional time as we should be able to, as teachers want to be able to. They're as frustrated as anyone because of the complexities of the schedule.
I mean, this is, this is probably a naive question, but can you just add in that, like, can you just add the, like, could you do that five days a week or does that, could you have that core, you know?
Yes, yes, we could, we could simply go back to a schedule where all the core classes are treated equally within the schedule.
Or math.
Or something, yeah. There are a lot of options. We need to start exploring. We need to start exploring. I think, you know, teachers are, they've done the best they can and every year they try, you know, they're very flexible and they come up with, you know, oh, okay, science and social studies will pair up, we'll do a project for a month and then we'll switch, then we'll rotate. I mean, we've seen many, many iterations of this and we've had some success. It's not as if it's just wasted time. I think we can do better with the time for kids and I think a lot of teachers feel the same way, so.
So if it's fair to say, to hear you because we heard four goals, you're, you're working this year, this year is on the study, brainstorming, thinking, working through mechanics of what next year would look like differently, but this year you're keeping with the status quo as you explore that.
Exactly.
For a better idea for next year.
Exactly. Thank you.
With all your input.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of little questions about, actually one question really, about number four.
Sure.
Thinking about, I believe I heard you say is that it's a two-year, you're thinking, realistically, it will take two years to kind of see that improvement. So you've got some benchmarking to work through in the beginning, for the beginning of this year of how high, because you've got high school students, that's four different grades, different levels, some way to ascertain how students are doing with writing and then setting specific goals of what you're looking for? Like, how are we going to know this goal moves forward?
It's a good question. My understanding of the way this goal originated was, came about anecdotally from our 11th, 12th grade level teachers as they work with kids leading up to writing and preparation for college applications. They've been working with these kids for a long time, they've got a pretty good, I don't know, I call it an internal benchmark, they kind of know what they can expect from kids at that level. And it was waning, it just wasn't the same. They were not seeing, kids were struggling to produce a level of writing that they'd become accustomed to. Become accustomed to. I don't, I'm still coming up with who's accountable for what as part of the CIP. I don't know exactly what our benchmarks are going to be moving forward. You know, we don't get a lot of standardized data from kids as they approach their exit with us. The best indicators we have are what the 12th grade, the X-Files writing, teachers, the humanities writing teachers are saying about what they're seeing from the kids, but we're not going to have, you know, that 10th grade MCAS score to lean on for data like we do in the earlier grades.
And the 10th grade MCAS score may or may not capture what it is we're looking for for students who graduate from high school and are able to write well, whether they're going to college or not, right?
Well, that was the origin of the goal. That's certainly not the only place we're going to see progress, right? They're working on this through the middle school all the way up to high school. This is a vertically aligned, you know, goal within many departments, not just the English department.
And before you say a little bit about, I think you mentioned kind of there was some curriculum work that was going to be done. What does, what are the tactics here? Is it just a matter of changing how it's taught, spending more time on it, creating a new elementary program of some sort?
I think a lot of it has to do with how we're going to use our time as a department and how we're going to use some of the PD time. The curriculum work that was started last year, there was a focus on the texts we're using in different departments. And I don't know, we have yet to have a leadership meeting. I'll find out very soon what the intention is, but I, I feel, I hope that most of the department time in the humanities, for example, will be aligned with this goal. Some of our PD time as a building will be aligned with the school. I think last year, a combination of multiple shifts in leadership and some curricular work that supplanted a lot of what this goal was intended to do prevented them from really getting started.
Thank you.
Brenda, I'll just leave this right here for you. Shred lower.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. I'm here to present my school improvement plan. My, you can go to the next slide. So a little bit about Morris students. I was asked them for their feedback, so we are compassionate, hardworking, and I love this, top-notch. That was like that they voted on, you know, what we all thought of ourselves. And Morris is fun and we learn so much every day. So those are what the students are saying at Morris Elementary School. A little bit about us. This year, we have 337 students pre-K to 5. Our class size is between 15 and 20. Our EL population is 20 students, which is an increase of five, which is pretty large for us. Response to intervention, we have 49 students in our Tier 2 supports. We, we have 34 students in, I'm sorry, that's, we have 49 students in ELA and 34 students in math. Some of those students receive both ELA and math. 17 students on 504 plans and we have 38 students on individual education plans. 11 of those students are diagnosed with autism or a health diagnosis. 20 of them have either a developmental delay or a specific learning disability and seven of those students are on an IEP for communication. Highlights, our MCAS highlights. Morris outperforms the state in third, fourth, and fifth grade in both ELA and math. We met or exceeded recovery targets set by the state. I'm here, you all invited us back in November. You'll hear more about those recovery targets in November. And our student growth data is moderate to high growth. Before I go on, any questions about Morris and who we are?
Specifically just about the targets. So that has to do with, the recovery targets were late to COVID. How are we?
Right.
What was happening and where are we now?
Yeah, they gave us.
Recovery.
Right. Just as we were given the MCAS, like literally that week, they told us that we were going to have to meet these recovery targets to get us back to where we were in 2019. And proud to say we met all our targets in year one, so. All four of my goals are related to the school administrative rubric and the teacher rubric set out by Desi. So we have four areas that teachers are evaluated on and four areas that I'm evaluated on. So the first area is curriculum instruction and assessment, so that is my first goal. I will just speak to the action steps. So the first action step, and for members of the school committee who are here for the second year, my plan has been tweaked a little bit. Some of the items are similar. And then I've updated the plan based on Dr. Collins's entry plan along with our strategic plan. So action step number one, teachers will research evidence-based, inclusive, and culturally appropriate curricula that create meaningful connections with students. This is our work, as Jeremiah stated, that what is happening over at LMHS is also happening at Morris. We are doing some work with the ADL, learning strategies and resources to create an inclusive environment for all students. Along with, and I had mentioned this last year, four members of the Morris staff, including myself, took a social justice course, and we are continuing that work. Due to some leadership changes last year, we didn't get as far as I wanted to get in the plan. But this year, and by the end of next year, we will have lessons and new material for students to have access to. I do want to state that with the increased EL population, we've invested a lot of materials in some books for students, just to be able to go to our school library. And if somebody is reading Spanish, that they're able to pick out a book that is in their native language so they can read, because that's really important. And my EL population, they're constantly telling me, can you get me some more books? Because we started off very small, so that is a goal for us. My action step number two, teachers will continue to use data to effectively facilitate small group differentiated instruction that fosters meaningful connections with students. This year, our teachers, we're working with the LEA, so the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is developing a new teacher rubric. Administrators already have that rubric to go by. In the old 2018 rubric, I don't mean to go off the track a little bit, but it all goes together, had just an area that said, like, you were culturally proficient. Well, now, in the 2023 rubric, it is incorporated throughout the whole rubric. And it is important that we are constantly just making our lessons and our instruction relevant to the real world. So, that is where this action step comes into. Not to mention, we're excellent at our Tier 2 and our Tier 3, but I want to work on our Tier 1 and those students who are at grade level or above, and pushing those students who are above grade level and giving them work that will have them grow even more. So, that is that action step. And our Amplify Science curriculum is now expanded to 2nd and 3rd grade. Thank you so much for allowing that purchase with the budget. You will see on November 13th, little commercial, how awesome our science MCAS scores are. Not to mention, the students love doing science, they really love the program. It is really engaging. And again, that program brings it back to the real world, they're doing real-world applications. Goal two is teaching all students. This is specific to our PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Last year, I applied for the state to be a part of the multi-tiered Systems of Support Academy offered through the state. Morris was accepted. So, we will be getting a coach to help us roll out our PBIS initiatives. We've already started that, that is our ROAR. For those of you who have students at Morris, hopefully, they're coming home with those little tickets that they're being acknowledged for their positive behavior. We are working, action step number one is working with the ADL and just making sure that our environment is inclusive to all and everybody feels safe. Action step number two is continuing our work with PBIS. And that's the same with action step number three. The great thing about working with the MTSS Academy is we're going to have access to a program called SWISS. So, we will be able to enter our data, like, our discipline data information into this program. Also, we'll be able to input all the data on our PBIS tickets. And it will tell us, like, oh, your buses are having a problem right now. Like, you might want to do a booster around that. And so, that's, that's our goal number two. Goal number three focuses on parent, family, and community engagement. And we are going, as a district, we're going to be surveying families and hopefully students. So, I am hoping for 100% participation of all my families. And the Morris staff and I will respond to the feedback as soon as that survey's developed. And along with Dr. Collins's safety plan, roll out just to ensure that we're practicing all our response plans throughout the year. And goal number four is professional responsibility, being reflective on our practices. So, goal four is staff are learning new tools and resources to make sure that their instruction is inclusive and provides a sense of belonging. I'm also working with a consultant, and we are implementing learning walks at Morris Elementary School. We had our first one a week ago, and this is where we decide as a group what we want to focus on. A group of teachers volunteer, they go into a classroom for a few minutes, they report. I'm actually not involved in it because it's not evaluative. So, they do this with a consultant, they record what they see, then they go back. And at the end of the day, we have our glows and our grows of instruction. So, by the end of this school year, I'm hoping to have all of my teachers participate in a learning walk. And lastly, we did not get to this last year, this is the same action step as last year. It's just to ensure our Title I interventionists are meeting with classroom teachers on a regular basis to update on progress, interventions, and just make sure that we are collaborating. And that is my school improvement plan. And my leadership team, and I have a new school council, so my leadership team helped me define our school improvement plan.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions, anybody?
Just curious on the, from the point about surveying, is this the same climate survey we've been talking about?
It's the one that's going to be created in the teaching and learning subcommittee. Yeah, so whatever is, we're going to send that survey.
Yeah, we're going to.
I don't think it's developed yet, but it is.
Does, like, vocal data in part impact that at all?
So, our vocal data is pretty strong, the stuff from MCAS. I personally would like to see a survey done for the district because I just see, when I look at our voca data and the way that those questions are asked, I'm not sure all of our students understand what they're being asked in grade four.
Right.
If that makes sense. So, this will be a new opportunity with the school district, who's going to be creating a survey of their own to make sure that it is understandable for whatever age group you're targeting.
Gotcha.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Is there anybody that doesn't know what the voca data is? Not to call anyone out, but I'll just explain it for the public in the world, too. Is that when you, if I'm correct, when the students take their MCAS, there's some questions that are asked that are not specifically about a subject matter, asking them about various topics that are more under the social, emotional, and there's a number of different topics. And then we can take a look at that data on the DESI tab. Anyone can, if you wanted to look at that, correct? Am I correct with that?
Indeed, by that, by the time we get that data back, I mean, I can't, my 5th grade students are LMHS right now, so it's fine. Like, when we do this survey, we'll have immediate feedback, where we can respond appropriately in a more timely manner.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, one other question, just on the PBIS. I know last year you mentioned there were sort of more challenges than in the past with behavioral issues. And then by the spring, there was roar and all of that. How do you feel like the trajectory of that is going? Are you seeing new problems? Is that starting to address things?
So, I would say our, we have some struggles in a few of our younger grades that we're being proactive. I mean, we're very proactive because we use second step, which has a bullying component to it. I think that our PBIS ROAR will help bring the consistency and the predictability that is needed. Because it's hard when you're young, you have one teacher in one grade, and then you move up to the next grade. And if we're all using the same language, it's easier for them to understand. But in general, I mean, our behavioral issues at Morris are minimal. I would say we have maybe one grade that struggles in particular, and that is most likely a result from the pandemic.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so next, actually, and that kind of basically tees off the discussion of the climate survey task force. And I just want to acknowledge, and David brought it to our attention, and our governors and leadership brought it to our attention, something I just, so much in our policies I didn't realize, but when we're seeking any outside input, if I'm correct, David, we as a committee need to vote on that. And it would be, anybody that's beyond our, the seven of us, we're pulling together a subcommittee or a task force to advise and to help us implement in a workshop way. But ultimately, anything that we use as part of our, an instrument of our work, we would vote to approve that, and then it would come back before us at some point. So, that is, the role of the school committee is not to basically delegate out our power to someone else, because we're the elected people doing that. If I'm correct in my understanding, and thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Yeah, in terms of, if it's advising us, but if it's, I think if it's solely in Bill's bellyweight, and he wants to do it, and it's generated from him, then our imperateur is not necessarily required.
All right, and just before you run to that, I have, when I was the coordinator of graduate leadership and education programs, and ran something called the Principals Academy, I literally worked with hundreds of aspiring and sitting principals and superintendents. And just want to say to the board and to the community at home that our principals are absolutely top-notch. They tick all of those indicators that you look for in highly efficient folks. And they have very, very different styles, but both are very effective and a pleasure to work with. So, moving on to the, so I'm, and how we do this is, really, I leave to the board's discretion. But what I am looking for is to put together a task force in relation to my entry plan. So, part of my entry plan is to get all of this data, to meet with different leaders, to meet with each one of the board members and the administration and all of these stakeholders. But it becomes kind of anecdotal, right? I can start to piece some things together. But to actually get a perception of what all of our stakeholders feel is, what I need to shape that is a climate survey. And so, I'm looking for a number of stakeholders to be part of that, to be part of that task force, to put this together in short order. I really am hoping that maybe two meetings and be able to get this back to you all, not your next meeting, but your November meeting, with something that you could look at, see the questions. What I would do is bring some sample questions, and we would vet them and tweak them and such. And then, as soon as possible, get them out to the, to all of the stakeholders and staff and parents and students and community members that don't have children at school. And use that as a two-years, take another, the dipstick again at the end of this year, and then again at the end of the next year, to see how are we doing. And at the end of this year, to make course corrections for next year. But to see, to guide, to guide me on what is the, what is the perception? Because what I don't want to do is spend two years getting it wrong. I really want to have a real sense of the pulse of what does the community say? What do they think? What do they feel needs to be addressed? And then I can, I can make, I can fine-tune the entry plan to meet those needs. So, there's a couple of ways we can do it. As Mr. Remler pointed out, if it is a school committee task force, then you approve it and you appoint it. If it is, if it is something that I am putting together and then bringing back to you, then that's within my purview. But, but either way, we're getting to the same end. Whatever is your preference, I am absolutely fine with doing. Again, my hope is to do it in really short order, not to drag this out and have it be long. I'm hoping for, I'm hoping for two meetings with this task force, and then to be able to bring this set of questions back for your approval before it goes out to the community, and have it out to the community as, you know, as quickly as we can.
So, it sounds to me like this is something you're very, very passionate about. It's something that you have brought to the table, it's something that you wanted to start from the very beginning. I mean, I have no issues at all, would it be your baby? Can I ask who would comprise this task force?
Well, I'd like, I would, my thought would be that there'd be three folks, maybe one from each of three subcommittees on the school committee, HR, governance, and leadership, and TLC. In addition, the, in addition, I'd be looking to have the principals. And then one of the other, someone else from admin as well. Some, probably a couple of teachers from the elementary, a couple of teachers from middle, a couple of teachers from high schools, a couple of students from middle, a couple of students from high school, a couple of parents, you know, again, trying to keep this streamlined and fast, but at the same time, have it be truly representative, right? So that, I don't want to have us come up with these questions, and then have some group of stakeholders say, hey, you never asked us for our input, right? So, in addition to the parents, and then some community members that don't have students here. So, it's, there's no way for it to be a really small group, but I'm hoping that we can still make it an efficient group.
Kim, I just have a couple of thoughts. One, I definitely agree with Kim that I think you should own it and sort of prepare it. For what it's worth, I would really encourage you not to go the broad task force model with composing it for two reasons. One is, I think, of all the things to design by a committee, the survey is one of the worst. You know, I think certainly you can ask everyone to suggest questions to you, but.
Sure.
At the end of the day, you don't want a group like you just described, sort of going through and dealing with wording and options. And I, I think that would be difficult. But second, because I just, and, and, you know, certainly you might want to go a different direction with it. But I would encourage not taking a, this has to be exhaustive and cover every question anyone might ask and make sure no one says you didn't ask my question, because that's, pretty much an impossible task. Someone's going to say you didn't ask their question anyway. But long surveys are generally bad surveys. People aren't going to complete them, and you're going to end up with sort of a massive amount of data. Whereas I think best surveys work, sort of working backward from what do you actually want to know? And, you know, I think as you just described why you want it, I think you probably already know what you want to know. And not that it won't be helpful to have people lobbed in, there will be three things you didn't think of.
Sure.
But I don't really want a climate survey designed by 20 people. I want you to have those feedback that you are most interested in. And so, for all of those reasons, I think a much more sort of hub-and-spoke system, if you will, will produce a much better survey much faster. And I mean, I would encourage you to sort of, you know, we also have as a starting point. we also have as a starting point, the survey used for each of the last two strategic plans, which had a bunch of recommendations from consultants at one point. So, you know, that's sort of an interesting menu to start from.
Right.
But I would really encourage you to sort of, over the next week and a half, with input from anybody who has a suggestion of a question, come up with the list of 10 questions that you want on the survey and like the three alternates that didn't quite make the cut. And if you still want our input, bring that back to the next meeting and we can hash it out. But then it should be in families' inboxes by November 1st, I would think, for one man's opinion.
So I, I think that, you know, given the timeline that you have presented and I agree with it, you want to get this done, you want to get it done quickly. I'm not necessarily against the task force. On two, like Orin was a little bit like, woo, you just kept going, going. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people. And, you know, you do run a tight meeting and a tight ship, but that would be a lot to hone in and to feel like we got something accomplished at the end of the day. And like Orin said, I think you do kind of know what it is and what it would be for. And I'm sure that at the end of the survey, they'll be asking for written comments like most do. So that would be an opportunity for that question that didn't get in there or if somebody felt like they weren't being heard or your question wasn't asked, there would be that opportunity. I don't think, necessarily think it's a bad idea that you do work with, you know, the admin and a couple of the school committee members and get those 10 questions. I would, I would caution of having that. While I appreciate what you're trying to do, you're going to hear back from all of them anyways.
Be on the wheel of the picture.
I think that, I think less is best at this point.
One thought I have, because we were thinking about the terms of the subcommittees, because sometimes the format of the subcommittee is sort of a better way to dig in and kind of workshop through it, is if when you had your draft, we had a chance at upcoming, you know, subcommittee meetings, that we would have a chance to have that conversation then, which at one point or another, I think would be every one of us between the different subcommittee meetings. That's just a thought, would give us a chance to do it in a more of a workshop way, rather than being on a task force and having to meet. I don't know, what are my thoughts about that? And then certainly whatever formal school committee meeting if we needed to vote or approve. But as you were pointing out in the policy of as if it's your document and you're owning it, and then, you know, when you get the data, I think some of what we've been talking about is how are we forming more refined goals based upon, in your entry plan, getting all this information about where the attention is most needed? And we've talked anecdotally, everybody has different ideas, but this will give us hopefully the information we need.
Yeah, I envision that the information that we get will help the various subcommittees move forward and maybe describe some of their goals. I am cautioned waiting, you know, to move forward with each subcommittee looking at what you have first. And then just because trying to get meetings together, trying to get people together and then going to three subcommittees and then back to you, I think the important piece is the information that comes out of all of this. But then would be presented to the three subcommittees.
Sure.
And then we'd be able to hone in on whatever happens to be under our purview.
And I don't know, just one, I think the other, I think sort of getting everybody's input will be terrific. I think the one other thing I like about sort of hub and spoke rather than kind of going to committees is that I think written feedback is by far going to be most useful. And one of the disadvantages of just our processes is that anything that's going to go to a stuff like, we can't insert comments in documents and subject red lines and even, you know, send back a suggested wording if it's through a committee process, whereas I suspect that'll be what's most valuable. So that's one thought. And then the other thing that just came to mind, I wasn't sure if this is was what you were describing, but for what it's worth, I would say it should probably only be a survey of families. And because, that's not to say we should not also have a survey of staff, but the questions to be asked are very different. And I just remember from the strategic planning process, having the single survey that sort of everyone answered. And I remember we went back and coded it as this admin response was like, okay, but how, who's interpreting this how and what do they mean? I think a well-worded and targeted survey would be simply the families and possibly even separate from Morris versus LMHS. Which means that a parent, you know, one of the issues like, oh, like they've got a kid in each school, what are they answering for? And how do we interpret? I, I don't have kids in both schools. If I did, I would rather answer the survey twice, I think. If I wanted to answer it at all, which hopefully everyone will. I would, and to the extent that probably what you want to know about the two schools is different. Some questions might be the same, some might not. I think having targeted surveys for families at Morris, families at LMHS is what's going to be most valuable for round one. And we can come back two months later and do a staff one as well. But I think that will be much more powerful than a LMHS.
The one question I have in that, because I do really believe strongly in student voice, is, and I do think it makes a big difference, as Brenda was talking about with the Voca survey, is that, you know, how questions are worded, need to be age-appropriate. But then if we would, I'm going to give you too many surveys to do, but whether it's, you know, a separate document itself that's kind of parallel to the family questions is to actually ask students directly what they're experiencing or what they, what it is we want to know from them, right? What is what we want to know from them? And I think various documents, various tools are trying to get at that. An example, I think of one of the questions that's on the Voca survey is something like, do you have an adult in the building that you trust that you can go to, for example, something like that? But in a way, that would be, you know, questions about how students are feeling about their school in their voice, I think would be important. And it could even be much shorter for the students. It could be five questions. I don't really know. I'm not, the devising of the survey is definitely not in my wheelhouse, but.
And I, I, no, I appreciate that approach. I definitely want to know, I do want to hear what the students' voice are or where they're at. And the staff. But the idea of making it, making it three separate surveys or, you know, one for the elementary, one for the high school, and then the same sort of thing with staff and students, I can certainly do that. Not all at once, but in rapid succession, hopefully, and get that information. Because again, I think it's going to drive a lot of what the principals are going to do as well.
Yeah, I kind of agree, I kind of agree. I agree with Kim and with Orin. And I, I feel that when I, that just getting those, the number of people that we talked about in a room, you know, it's going to be December, you know, November. It's going to blow your timeline away and then, and then having a meeting and then another meeting and a follow-up. So I really think that something focused on your goals and in the areas that are important to you, and perhaps even having a deadline for submission and keeping it focused and on a timeline. I'm comfortable with you not coming back to us for vetting because I think that's going to absolutely, you know, slow down what you're doing.
This, this makes the timeliness and the ability to get it out a lot faster. And again, my, my, my only thought with having this cast of thousands, right, to be part of this is to make sure that folks have a voice, that I'm not, if this isn't like the Dr. Collins survey, it's right, what, what is the community that we, do we make sure that we need to hear? But I can, but I can work with this, I can, I can appreciate this.
I feel that you're even doing the survey and asking from the response is giving them that voice. You know, the thoughtful questions that come forth and they're put out. That's when they have the voice and I think they're going to be very appreciative of that. And while I appreciate what you're saying, you're such a good guy, but, you know, that's a lot, that's a lot.
I mean, if I could just like step in for a second. You know, Dr. Collins, have you done one of these kind of surveys, you know, previously? You know, what kind of format did you have set up originally? Was it something similar to what you were proposing? And what kind of responses did you get from it? And how quickly did it move when you were, you know, going after, you know, a proposal like this?
I have, I have done some surveys, certainly a number of, a number of staff surveys, you know, previously having been superintendent and principal. And I've done family surveys and, and to Orin's point, they've always been, you know, pretty short and to the point so that somebody would take the time to fill them out. And typically, very, very focused, right? It was a topic-driven, it was something that we wanted to know, community input about something that we were dealing with. This is a little more, a little more broad, sort of the climate, right? What's, where do folks think they were at? And where would they like to see us be? And then, you know, and then my job along with the administration is to, is to move us in that direction and gather stuff.
Yeah, the only thing I worry is if it, it is very limited and kind of people stick to that information that we're pointing them at, that we want to get, and we don't get those kinds of answers and responses that we're looking for, which is we want people to have a voice, then we've kind of pigeonholed them. And we may send out the same survey a year from now or six months from now. And again, it's going to be something that, you know, we're not still getting that, that data that we're looking for.
Right.
You know, an actual, you know.
And a piece of it would be some sort of Likert scale thing like, like where do you see that we are, right? And then when you dipstick this later on, right? Hopefully it moves up the scale where people are saying, yeah, you know, we're feeling better about this. Or we feel like we are being heard more or more input, whatever. Because that's, again, going to be our goal. Nope, go ahead.
Oh, I just, to your point about asking multiple times, it's actually a great idea, I think, to include a final question that's like, what didn't we ask you?
Yeah.
I've actually done surveys where we're tongue-in-cheap offer a I don't like these options option for people, right? Like, but giving, you know, if people, especially for something that's the first of multiple rounds, giving people an opportunity to say, this is what I wanted to ask, I would have wanted to choose a different option, can be a great prompt.
That's, that's a perfect prompt.
Yeah, I like the idea of ending it with a written, if they want to have a written response. Can I just ask Jeremiah and Brenda something?
Yes.
I mean, when I hear climate survey, you know, I'm thinking about the climate of not only the community, the school district as a whole, but obviously elementary is a totally different climate than the middle school, high school climate. Would it be more, would it be helpful to you to have the differentiation in the surveys, the two separate surveys or not? Or do you think that you could do this in one survey? Where do you get the responses that would be addressed?
I'm going to take my cues from him. If he decides at the district level, this would be most helpful, that's the data we'll get. If he wants us to have specific data, I'll, you know, we can be helpful in helping him provide questions that are school-specific. But I agree with him.
I appreciate that. I'm just saying, also to be helpful to you at the end of, at the end of the day, I'm sure your goal is to be able to provide feedback to our administration at both levels and see what we can talk about.
And I wasn't talking to your question, I guess that sounds like, if we're going to use this at a district level to sort of, you know, make some decisions about funding and programs, then maybe, maybe a single instrument would help. Sort of, yeah, more specific questions for building would help me understand my building, but that might not be how we'll leverage the data, I guess.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll sit in the room and roll up our sleeves and again, start with the end in mind to kind of, again, to your point of, what do we, what is the information that we really want to have? And then what are the questions that are best going to get that for us? And right, I, this absolutely isn't going to be done in a vacuum because it needs to be valuable to the principals.
But did you get a chance to do?
I was speaking to two separate surveys versus one.
Did you want to add something, Brenda?
Well, I think that you would be able to ask similar questions based on topics. Like, I don't know what topics, but like, I'm used to having a survey for families and students of certain age where they were very similar to the middle and to the high school. Like, if we're looking for, like, do you feel like you're engaged in class? Like, there is a way to say that where it could be similar.
Okay.
That's good, thank you, I appreciate it.
And I would also just say that some of, and I think some of what we've talked about in a number of school committee meetings and retreats is wanting to have a clear sense of what our Lennox students are experiencing now, because we've had some feedback from past, you know, research investigations, informal conversations, but trying to have it actually feed how we're moving forward. It's important to have it more direct. But some of the information given, and for example, in the student forum, that was much more verbal, it was not a survey, was very sensitive. So obviously, the ability to get people, the broad ability to give some information and also recognize some verbiage about where that goes, confidentiality, you know, because I do think students, especially adolescents, high school students, but maybe younger students as well, need to feel like, I'll just be candid. I think sometimes students feel like, well, we answered another question we've already asked a bunch of times and nobody's doing anything about it. And so I think it's important that we, people recognize that we are actually asking because we want to know, because we do have new leadership in place and we really do want to target our actions and our resources toward the needs of students and that not feeling like it's another administrative bureaucratic thing, you know what I mean?
And so I don't know how many, I mean, I don't know how many students are watching on a Tuesday night, but we really want to know. We really want to know what you think.
Well, and maybe within the context of announcing it in school or giving students an option is an opportunity to reinforce that with them to say, yeah, we need to know. Because sometimes we're also working on solving problems and we're not getting what we're trying to get at, so. So I think, if I'm correct, it sounds like the consensus we don't really need to put this term in the vote because it's your ball and you're going to run with it. And if you need us, you will reach out to us individually.
And I will keep you posted along the way.
Thank you very much.
So how do you, how do you go about getting the three subcommittee members?
Oh, I think we were suggesting that maybe we were going to do that, right?
Oh, we're not doing that?
That would be, how, any member of any subcommittee who would like to?
Oh, I thought, I thought we were sticking with the admin, Brenda, Jeremiah, admin and three subcommittee members and Bill. Are we suggesting not doing that?
No, that's, I think if we.
I was saying, when you kept going beyond that, I was like, woo. So whatever you, it's up to you.
To you.
Okay, all right, I will, yeah.
And if the timing works for a subcommittee to sit and work through some questions that you have, we each have meetings, you know, pretty typically every few weeks or so, or we can schedule one if everybody's available. Trying to put three people together, three other instead of 20, so.
I am hopeful to move very fast.
Were you still thinking that, you know, a task force would be something that was, you know, beneficial? Then you would like to see a task force where there is, you know, some
I support.
cooperation between, you know, Brendan, Jeremiah and Bill and subcommittee?
I, my original thought was the task force was going to be how you presented it. And we stopped there. And then you went into the larger picture, which I appreciated. But I also deferred that to you. It's going to be your, on your timeframe, your comfort level, what you want to, who you're looking for for feedback. But I was perfectly comfortable with a task force of seven versus a task force of 20. Is all I was saying, yeah. So whatever you decide.
And, yeah, all right, I will, I'm going to take all of this feedback, but I will definitely keep you impressed of how this shakes out.
Great, thank you.
And what we need, yeah, thank you. All right, next is the enrollment. Presented a little bit, a little bit differently with the current October's, October numbers at the beginning. Really for data to be useful, it should have at least three years. So you see last year and the year before that. So you can compare all of those Octobers. And you've got two end-of-the-year reports. You can see that as far as the school of choice number goes, the goal is, the goal is 40% and we are pretty much smack dab on that 40%. Over to the far right, you see what the strategic plans maximum numbers are. There's only one grade, which is eighth grade, that exceeds that by four students. Every other one is, is at or below what the strategic plan calls for. You can see that we ended last year at You can see that we ended last year at 490, and we are at, I mean, sorry, 790, and we are at 783. Last September, we're at 781. Again, we, this October, we're at 783. So it's a pretty, pretty consistent thing. I don't know if there are specific questions about our October numbers?
I, I have, I have, I have something I can't reconcile. And that is the validity or the value of the strategic plan numbers vis-à-vis the comments we get about lack of space in our schools. And it makes me wonder what the strategic plan numbers are based on, and if they're really of any value if we're constantly having issues with space. And I don't know.
Can, can I just piggyback on that? I also think, and I remember being part of, this is the strategic plan before the current one, where those numbers came in. And I, and if I can just give some commentary about, we had a team of wonderful volunteers that were doing some data analysis and having a conversation of sort of, what does it mean if we were to not have school choice? What does a school at Lennox look like? What is the ideal? There was a lot involved, both with a consultant survey and also some pretty big data analysis with some community members, including Pam Keever, who, who was on our planning board as well, and is very good with this. So some of the strategic planning numbers were sort of, what, what is it like to educate kindergarteners? And what does that class size look like as opposed to fifth graders, as opposed to eighth graders, ninth graders, and we're also trying to have robust curriculum, peer groups, sports offerings? So when we look at those numbers, that, a lot of that is, you know, obviously, it's constructed a little bit, but it's looking at what are ideal class sizes? What is a good cohort of students to be able to offer a robust curriculum? What is, and be able to have AP classes and various things that people want? I think that it's in tension with, as David points out, things like our physical plan and whether we have space for stuff. It's also kind of in tension with this goal and the, to clarify for people out there who think about whether we have a rule or a law or something when we're at the 40%, it was really a, more of a philosophical discussion that we've been operating under for a while of how much of our school community should represent choice versus students who live in our community. And this decision to be informally at 4% could be something this group could have a discussion and say, I don't agree with that 40%. There's no law, there's no firm policy that says that that's what we have to do. It's coming more from an informal point of view. But as you put out, David, the tension around space, but we've also have some tension around, and this may come up in some other items on our agenda, being able to offer sports for students or being able to have enough people, enough students that are interested in programming, music, band, theater, et cetera. So those things, I think, are sometimes in tension with each other. You know, again, correct me if I'm wrong on any of that, but some of it is, you're right, David, in a way that I think the strategic plan numbers might not have any real relevance to where we are right now. I think they were coming from a place of looking at, what does a class size look like in younger grades versus older grades? And how does that impact the operation of our school? If I'm, if I'm remembering correctly what happened.
Yeah, I was not, I was not here when those were devised, I really can't speak to that, but that makes perfect sense to me.
I think, just to add one thing, I wasn't part of the committee that initially developed these, but in the subsequent strategic plan did a lot of work on the enrollment and have since done a lot of work on the sort of connected budget issues. And my understanding of it is that the figures are basically scaled against, the, the best way to think of it is sort of a full potential scale for the district. So if you think about K5, the only real question we have is how many sections we're going to offer. Assuming we want three, the only question is, what's the right number of kids in an elementary school class? And they said, all right, we like the idea of 18 per section in, for K2, and then 20 per section in 3.5. When you get into the middle and high school, it gets more complicated because you basically have the number of teachers that you need to offer the full range of core things. But then, once those core things are offered, how many additional things can they offer, in a sense, right? So I'm oversimplifying a bit, but it's basically, if you start from, to deliver the full basic program, what level of staffing do we need? Okay, well, how many kids could, with that level of staffing, could you provide sort of the full program to? And so, and that's why then you also see that sort of 6, 7, 8 is a little lower than the 9 through 12. To your question, it doesn't take into account the number of classrooms at all, and I think, Jeremiah, I could speak this further, my sense is, one key constraint is just how much stuff we choose to offer.
Yeah.
You know, or if you took everyone and said, okay, but we're only offering classes that have at least 15 kids in them, my guess is you'd have closer to enough rooms fairly quickly.
That, or you've, you've got space for six electives, but you're actually offering eight, so.
But we have a problem now where not every even teacher has their own rooms.
That's right, good. Can I, I was not here for the development of the plan, but my understanding of the numbers as, as they stack is that this also takes into account some entry points, that we have kids who might have gone elsewhere for elementary school and who come back to the district through middle school, and they may have continued through middle school somewhere else and then returned to the district from high school. So you see the number growing because of that.
And I also think, if I recall, that sometimes it's also a big Peter, again, on a small district, and the scheduling and wanting to offer, have robust offerings so that students don't have different times of the year where they have multiple studies, which means they're there, but they're not engaged in any learning. So how are we, sometimes it's a small section because we want to keep kids engaged in learning, but at the same time, then we're moving around. So I think that, you know, there are many numbers that are in tension with each other, but I just wanted to kind of speak to David's point, but also clarify, the, the numbers to the right are sort of, are much more theoretical than the ones we have in front of us, obviously.
It's a good conversation.
And it also does leave open, at some point in the future, if we wanted to say, should we have a different number around choice? Because there are some years where we have a small class size completely in its cohort, looking, for example, at the 10th grade. But if they have a short, very small number of residents, we are already in tension on that one grade of being at 53% because it's such a small cohort. But meanwhile, for those students, their experience, and some, and historically have been significantly smaller, there might be an impact there. So I, I'm not suggesting the answer, I'm just saying, I think we created this idea of 40%, not necessarily about capacity, not necessarily about what's best for the kids, more about this idea of how many kids are from Lennox and how many kids are not. I don't really know. And that's a conversation, I think, to continue to be had because it's a new group of people to engage in that conversation.
And just to make one other observation about the numbers, you know, one of the most important to look at is just the incoming resident kindergarten, which is what dictates that that is sort of the start of the pipeline. And the, the number of kindergartners we have showing up on September 1st is a good predictor of how many 12th graders we're, we're going to have 12 years from now. And, and the numbers have gotten significantly better the last couple of years. If you kind of scroll down to the bottom of the sheet where you see the, what is it? Bottom is 2021, 2022, you see we only had 21 incoming kindergartners. Now, that was mid-COVID, but you can even see above that, 26 in the first grade, 25 in the second grade. There's sort of been a few years in a row of low 20s. If Lennox remained in the low 20s, we could sell a great school system, but things like that 40% target start to run up against other things. When we did the last strategic plan, sort of 27, 28 was the steady state for how we had thought about the school. And so being up above 30 the last couple of years suggests we're actually post-pandemic, or for whatever reason, kind of running above the trend we had been at in the last five or 10 years.
Yeah, and I think some of the numbers also might suggest even that in the upper grades, we had people move in with children at older, older ages too, you know, moving and comparing them in, since pre-COVID. Thank you.
Staffing?
Sure, thank you.
The first, the first person for staffing or people that we're looking for aren't actually our hires. Dufour is looking for bus drivers, but their lack of being able to fully get a full complement of bus drivers impacts us. So I do list it as, as staffing. If anybody out there would like to be a bus driver, let Dufour know, please.
If you enjoy driving your own kids around town.
Think how much fun you can have.
Would like 20 times as many.
That's right. We might do a commercial. Long-term substitutes, Principal Kelly, I think, might have a lead on one. I just, this was, this was late breaking news, but, but as of the time I wrote this, we were still looking for a long-term substitute at each school. And, yeah, and Mr. Kelly is still in need of a special education paraprofessional for the elementary. And we are looking for a long-term biology teacher substitute at the middle high school.
And those ads are still out and ongoing?
We are, yes.
Do you need them?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And then we have an update about the hockey co-op. Dr. Ainge?
So, so a small change to our, our hockey co-op, which of course has to come before the school committee. This all stems from, my understanding is Berkshire School, who hosts the South County Hockey Co-op, they're upgrading one of their facilities, and I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but the long shot is, they don't, they aren't able to share as much ice time with the co-op that has been housed out of Mount Everett. So the Mount Everett co-op, which has included us, practicing at Berkshire School, and they need, they can't be as generous with their ice time as they have been, and we're grateful for that. So the athletic directors got together and they're, we're asking to relocate our co-op with, I believe, seven other schools, including Mount Everett, to Comic, which would host, they would host the co-op, I have that in quotes, just because they're hosting it at the Boys and Girls Club in Pittsfield. This would just be for one year. I believe we have, we're looking at four or five kids from Lennox would participate in the co-op, same number as would participate or were housed at Mount Everett. And no change in cost, just the drive time would be a little bit different. And this is just while Berkshire School is wrapping up their renovations, and our hope is that we will return to a co-op hosted at Mount Everett at Berkshire School next year. But change is taking place, hopefully, and we need your approval for that.
Yep, and this comes before you because the school committee has to approve co-ops, and this would be a change from the one that you had previously approved.
So we didn't prepare a text of one, so we'll have to go off the cuff and think about a motion, but also whether it has any questions.
To be entirely honest, I told you everything I know about this, so if you have questions.
Explain the blue line.
I'll make a motion to accept the hockey co-op update from Jeremiah Ames, as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike seconded. Any other questions? That cannot be answered, be answered by anyone in this room, no. All those in favor? Aye. And I will just add a commentary that I appreciate the creativity of a lot of our community athletic leaders and students in trying to keep the variety of sports that we have, because hockey has been a challenge in the Berkshires for a long time. So I appreciate that we keep the kids playing and the people try to work together, and thank you for that. And then we have a trophy case.
Final piece of my report is, there is a donation made by alumni group of $3,240.64. There has been ongoing donations for a, for a couple of trophy cases, which are in the process of being made by our own shop. But any donation like this needs your approval.
So, I didn't, I didn't plan, could plan a?
Well, sorry, just, so what is the, if we're making them ourselves, is the donation just to our general fund?
And lumber, and glass, and hardware, and the, the things that weren't already in our budget. So they are donating to, for the materials, and then, and then our students and teachers provide the expertise and the labor.
Just, just from a budget perspective, is there like a fund this goes to, or it just goes to the general?
No, it goes into a revolving fund where we put donations. And we keep it separate so that we can only expend the monies on what it's intended for.
Okay, and did you, would you just give us that number?
Yes, absolutely.
And this was donations from a variety of community and alumni?
This is the alumni, this one was specifically from the alumni group.
Class of 65.
The class, okay, yeah, this one's the class of 65.
Is this a number that was given for the cost of the materials?
No, this is just what they, they raised. And there have been, the class of, the class of 22 gave, previously, gave $1,619.36. Toward this, a Mr. Gilligan, an alum himself, gave $2,000 toward this. Multiple cases they're looking for.
And are we, did we, did we already vote, passed out a name, is this a named case situation or just that the cases need to be replaced?
I think so. Gym floor is being named, but not the case, the cases aren't going to have names on it.
Okay.
This is largely, we're so grateful, this donation's a very great bonus. This is largely the cabinets have been built, they're beautiful, the large panes of glass and the hardware to go with them is what this is going to fund. And this is sort of one of the last pieces as part of this renaming of the gym floor that'll be, that'll be made this, this basketball season.
And the gym floor is covered, we do this every year, we don't rename it, but we sand, you know, we refinish it every year. So we have those funds budgeted for that, that's coming out of the operating. But this is for the trophy cases that'll be part of that rededication.
So we need, if I understand it, to have a motion to accept the donation of the, from the class of 1965 in the amount of $3,240.64, is that's what we need? As the chair, I'm not allowed to do that, so.
I move that we accept the donation of $3,240.64 from the class of 65 toward our new trophy cases.
My second.
Thank you. And any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
That's very generous.
Great, thank you. Generous of them. And thank you to the class of 65 for continuing to support Lennox, MHS, great. Okay. Do we have anything on our new business? I don't think so.
Before we, can I request an item beyond new business in the next meeting? I don't know, that's in order for a blank new business board, but there's nowhere better to put it. I, I think it would be helpful to, for the committee to have a discussion about priorities that we have and want to pursue this year. Certainly, if someone wants to pass or doesn't have any, that's fine too, but I don't think we've really had a conversation about what it is we want to do, if anything, as reflected in there being no new business. And so I think that would be a good starting point.
So what you're asking for is an agenda item at our next meeting to be able to brainstorm and talk about priorities to pursue this year?
Yes.
I can certainly honor that. And I would just say that if people in general have different ideas that you want on the agenda, I welcome people reaching out and talking to me and sitting down with Dr. Collins about that. I feel we've actually have talked about agenda items inherent in Bill's entry, Dr. Collins' entry plan, goals, and then the need to get more information about how we do that, but if you feel like there's more that you want to talk about. But if you feel like there's more that you want to talk about, this is considered a seven-member committee and I think I'm open to whatever. I think we also sometimes try to allocate time appropriately. So maybe reach out to me and let me know how much time you think and how you'd like to form that conversation. I'm happy to have that.
Okay. Can I, can I make a comment? Just in, in light of trying to make that as efficient as possible perhaps? You know, maybe submitting a specific item, a specific priority item? So it's so that we know that we're not, you know, just kind of off the cuff. But say, hey, this is, you know, this is my priority, this is most priority. So that we can then have an opportunity to prioritize our priorities if necessary.
Yeah.
I don't know if that fits in part of your idea of everything, or it's number eight is discussion.
No, I mean, I imagine folks would bring things. I feel like we still, particularly for the new members, haven't even had a chance to sort of do a basic introduction and why they're here and what they care about and what they want to focus on. And so I'd love to hear some more about that. I think for those of us who've been here for a while, some of us have things we have been working on or other issues that have come up. So I'm happy to submit my own things as specific agenda items, but I thought it would be useful for us to have a conversation as a committee.
And we certainly wouldn't want it to be necessarily limited either, right?
Yeah.
And maybe a good workshop meeting.
Yeah, and I would say that I feel like we've had quite a few conversations and gotten to know each other. I certainly feel that. And I feel like the subcommittees also are a great opportunity to put, to be much more free flowing. In fact, at our last TLC meeting, we said, what kinds of things does TLC want to work on? So I feel like you're the chair of two committees, I think, and so on those also. The chair has the ability to kind of bring some different issues forward. And in the subcommittees, we have the ability to kind of dig in and reach. We can do it here too. I just think it can be a little bit more unwieldy when it's a body of seven and we have to have a motion. Although we have found the workshop model, I think, to be quite good. And there was discussion at our last, at the end of our last retreat to talk more about this idea of goals and vision and the ways in which that come from governance and leadership and policies. And then also, I think, getting specific information about what our schools need, want, et cetera, to help guide that. So, I mean, we all have different ways of approaching it. But I feel like I know everybody pretty well, but if you feel like you want to get to know people better, I think we can certainly do that. Yeah. Talk some more about what that would look like at a future meeting. Okay, moving forward to subcommittees. Megan did give, unfortunately she's ill tonight and couldn't be here. And of course, it'd be the first time we don't have Zoom option. But she did say she would be watching and be available and mentioned that there were a number of policies that, I'll look quickly at what she gave me as an update. We met last week as a group to review what policies remain and purposely held out on sections G, I, and J to get leadership. Because some of the policies last year, as we recall, we updated and reviewed, but some of them require some digging in with new leadership team. It'll be part of the goals of this year. So that's what they'll be working on. And Human Resources?
Human Resources should meet soon to discuss any personnel changes, structure that will affect the budgeting process. So we will be calendaring that for later this month.
So this is my public mancula. We actually have a TLC meeting scheduled, I realized after 5 o'clock today, that it's actually scheduled for Thursday, but I'd missed giving Amy the posted deadline, and that is totally on me. So if I can email you both and see if we can reschedule to next weekend, with my apologies. For some reason, I added both in, I added in my next week calendar and this week calendar, and that was my mess up. So I apologize to everyone for not getting that agenda out because it needed to be out by today for Thursday. And finance?
We met to have an initial meeting and discuss what the budget process will look like generally speaking. I think it might be a good idea maybe at the next meeting to run through the overall timeline. I don't know if that's when you do it.
I can't remember, but yeah, we can certainly do that.
We should, somehow in a couple of meetings, just run through it as a.
I also do want to bring forward the first quarter financial report. So we can maybe do it in subcommittee, but after, for maybe the same meeting or the one after.
Thank you. And school building?
So I believe that the school building committee, the town school building committee's meeting will be October 19th at 6:00 PM. The location.
High School Library.
School library? That makes sense. Yeah.
We may have a Zoom option for that, but I'm basically confirmed online.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your work and your presentation. Thank you very much for your presentations, both of our principals and your work in our, in our buildings and moving things forward. That's the end of our agenda. Unless there's somebody who has something else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second. And all those in favor?
Aye.